All the Anfield Planning and zoning commission regular meeting to order for December 10th, 2020. Can I have a pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and roll call, please.
Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
There.
Charles Land. I don't see him. Mary Scott. I don't see her. Virginia Higley.
Here.
Frank Alimo.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Okay. At this time, I would like to appoint the two alternates, Vinnie Grillo and John Petronella, for the remainder of the meeting to take the place of the two absent commissioners. And can I get an approval of the minutes for November 12th, 2020's regular meeting?
So move.
Second.
Motion's made by Commissioner DeGray, seconded by Commissioner Higley. All in favor, say aye.
Wait a minute.
Aye.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Any corrections?
There is a correction on page 10. One, two, three, four, five, seven. Um, can I wrap down or support one up really easier? It stated that the parking still beats the overall requirement. Shouldn't it meet the overall requirement? If that could be reviewed. He may have said beats, but. Anybody else?
No.
See that?
Seeing none. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor, none against. And now for the November 16th, 2020 special meeting. Any comments, questions, or concerns?
I move to approve those.
Second.
Motion's made by Commissioner DeGray, seconded by Commissioner Higley. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Seeing none, it's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. And next, public participation. Is there anybody out there who would like to speak about any issues throughout the town of Anfield that are not on our agenda? If so, please speak up. State your name and address for the record. Seeing none. Moving on. Do we have any bond releases this evening?
We don't have any bond releases, but we do have a request through a letter. It's sort of an odd request, just because we don't normally handle bonds this way. I'm sure you all remember the River Cliff and River Overlook subdivisions on Meeting House Lane and River Cliff Lane and First Settlers Row.
Yep.
So the roads have been adopted by the town at this point, and it's customary to have a maintenance bond in place for a year after, or at least a year after, the adoption of the roads. That maintenance bond should be in the amount of $25,755. We have a letter here from Attorney Fallon that I can read to you, but basically what it says is they have a bond on, an engineering bond on file for $39,330. They would like to see that bond released, so they can use part of that money to file the required maintenance bond. Given that this is not how we usually handle this, Attorney Fallon asked that we bring it to your attention and see if the commission would be open to doing such a thing, considering the about $13,575 extra dollars are being held currently.
Is, is the engineering bond able to be released?
Uh, we had, I believe, yes, there was a memo from John Kabobo that the requirements for the engineering bond were met, and that memo went out before the roads were even adopted. That was something that had to go to council.
Okay, so if we release this bond, we have no bonds on the subdivision?
Correct. Then, correct, yep.
Right, this is just supposed, what they want to do is get this one released, and which, which is their right? I mean, it's time for it to be released, but then they want to have that released before they post the bond for maintenance. They want to use that money. That's the unusual part.
What if they don't?
That's.
I think it sets a bad precedence.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure how we can, I mean, if there's some way that we can assure that they, we get the money immediately, I, I don't know. That's the only way I'd be comfortable.
Could we cut them back to balance?
I don't know if that's possible or not. Certainly, we, something, I, I think it's I think it's a check, but I'm not positive. We'll have to double check that.
Right, but was the check ever cashed, or is it sitting in the vault?
I think that would be, I'm not really sure.
But I think that's what we'd have to find out. If the check is in an escrow account with the town, then with a letter from Attorney Fallon stating, "Take the $25,000, apply it towards that bond, and we refund the balance, the town's covered." Other than that, I have to agree with both of you. I don't think it's a good idea, and it's not setting a good precedence to have that subdivision with no bonds in place, considering it's being sold off piece by piece. Who is responsible to put the bond up for the entire subdivision when nobody really owns the entire subdivision anymore?
Well, we just, we just got this letter today, yesterday. I mean, it was just very recently, so.
Yeah, it came in yesterday.
Yep, maybe, maybe we can, we'll investigate it a little bit more. If we could just do the fund balance, you know, refund the balance, that would be great. We'll, we'll see if that's possible.
All right, I mean, and find out, you know, who is the responsible party? Once we release this bond, who actually owns the subdivision now?
Pappas.
They still own? Because I know they were selling lots off.
Well, they're selling lots, but they're the ones that are responsible for this bond.
Right, okay.
And this is the maintenance bond of, of, not the subdivision, but of the street itself, just the road.
Right, and, and that's what I'm saying. A lot of the lots are sold off now. So, you know, those people aren't responsible for this bond. This is how we get into trouble, and we end up with subdivisions that don't have bonds in place. The roads fall apart, and next to you, the town of Anfield's eating them, so.
Yes.
Understood.
Everybody agree?
Yes.
I agree.
Okay, so let us know how you make out with that. Moving on, continued public hearing, public hearing 2986.
Good evening.
Rich?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm zoning out. I'm Ken Nelson.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
There.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Frank Alimo.
Here.
John Petronella.
Here.
Vinnie Grillo.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Okay, is there anyone here for the applicant? If so, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Michael Banano. I'm an attorney at Tavano McCune and Banano at 1/4 Glastonbury Boulevard in Glastonbury.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you very much.
My name is Constantinos, Constantino. I'm the owner of the property in Holland, Connecticut.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Arthur Hall, the architect on the proposed project that this is related to. 49 Hartford Turnpike Vernon.
And what is your company?
Arthur Hall Architect.
Oh, beautiful, welcome, Arthur. Okay, so. Attorney Banano, would you like to start?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it, appreciate the time. I think every, I think the commission is familiar, project that we have before you, so I'm happy to provide as much background details as you may want. I respect the time of the commission, so I don't want to repeat anything that we said before, but we're here for a zone text change application, section 8.70. We are looking to adaptively reuse our property, particular which is 359 Hazard Ave. Side of the old Hazerville Grammar School, but of course, that's not the application that's before you right now, not here in front of you with the plan design special permit. But we are asking to amend the regulations as they exist, so that applicants such as us can reuse properties that are historic. And we think without changing these regulations, there's a handful of property that be lighted or cannot be used to their full potential. That's why we're here before you. There, at our last meeting where we were present, which was October 22nd, we had some meaningful dialogue and discussion. There was some feedback that we received from some of the commissioners, and we wanted a chance to digest that, and we've, we've proposed a couple of minor revisions that we think will address some of those concerns. And we also wanted to give the town attorney, Mark Sorato, a chance to review our proposed change in the regulations, so that if the commission were so poised to act tonight, that you wouldn't have to run it through town council before you vote. That's occurred. We can talk about that in a moment. But I just want to point out some of the, the feedback we've last time and what we've done about it since. So, but I know that, I know that had always some concern about whether we could use the property any differently, including some mixed retail use. We had some discussion about that. Of course, as I stated in the beginning, this is not our application with regard to this property, but instead, we're changing regulations as they stand generically, so although this property, I believe, and I know, uh, worked with Lori and Jen since the October meeting, and it doesn't seem like this property itself, itself to mix retail use because of timing issues, parking issues, but regardless, your regulations that currently exist, and we're not asking to change any of these. They do provide the commission with some criteria that would address this issue if, in fact, an applicant came before me with, before you with a, an application for a planned design permit. And I'm talking, I'm referring to in 8.7B, little 3, we've got these four criteria that the commission can use, specifically it has in their consideration, such as, does it provide pedestrian amenities such as gathering areas, sidewalk cafes, and the like? And then the next one, does it provide a service or business to address the need? But so, I bring that up because, yes, those are certainly valid. I think that's going to be by case examination and analysis that yourselves will go through when, in fact, an applicant comes before. So that, addressing some of the feedback that we've, was also something, whether true to spot zoning, which I feel confident that it's not. That's of course my opinion as an attorney, but it do research. Spot zoning, as you may or may not know, is a concern when we change either a zone change, could be analogous to that. You're addressing a small parcel or, or very few specifications. And the major concern is that it's, this change serves the benefit of this one parcel, amount of parcels, and is not harmony with the plan of conservation and development, whereas this, what we're trying to do in the, in a, will apply to, uh, it's not just ours, but certainly is in concert with the plan of co, and development, as from where we're standing. This is the adaptive reuse of historical building that really can't, they don't lend themselves to any other practical use in uh, it's not creating disturbance in the neighborhood, but in fact, contrary, it is actually adaptively and reusing. That's the proposal to use the properties in the building, so. And I think it's important to note that Attorney Sorato, you know, had no concern, at least didn't address or present any concerns with regard to spot zoning, uh, when he reviewed our, our proposed changes. We did make, as I mentioned in the beginning this week, it makes revisions to the last proposed application in front of you at the October hearing. Very minimal, and I can go through a comprehensive list of all the changes made over time, but, because I think it just kind of demonstrated that the applicant were really, we, we listened genuinely to the comments and discussion that the commission has shared with us, and, and we tried to accommodate all of those concerns. I think we've got a really good final product. Uh, but one of the changes that we made uh, was to eliminate the minimum acreage. So as it exists currently in the reg, uh, you have to have a minimum of one acre. We had initially proposed reducing half of an acre. Just as an aside, our project, our, our building is, is situated on .6 acres. We re, we eliminated that minimum acreage requirement because, A, I think it opens up the applicability of this section to other parcels, other properties, and whether it's now or in the future, to make that uh, one of the, the properties that, that showed up in our analysis in this particular district, how many properties could potentially be affected by this? Uh, and there's, you know, a parcel at least that's owned by the town, but maybe later won't be owned by the town, or one that's owned by a utility company that, you know, we don't know if that, or two. But by eliminating the minimum acreage, it's kind of just broadened the scope of what properties could be affected. And that also serves the dual purpose of, uh, with regard to funding, or at least reduce, reduce any concern, because again, we're opening it up more. We recognize that there's only a handful of buildings that really are going impacted by this, because there are only a handful of buildings that are deemed historic, uh, where you're limited to the, to the modifications you can make to the build and the use, what you can use that building for. So we know it's only affecting a handful. Uh, but that's the entire intent behind this change, proposed change, uh, which is to adaptively reuse these buildings in a meaningful way. We also increased the minimum square footage for studio apartments or units, all as one bedroom units. We had a lot of discussion, as you know, about the density and about the size of these units. In fact, our project is for nine two-bedroom units. We're proposing a change to, to reduce, uh, to have, I should say, 10 units, 10 dwelling units per half acre. So, we thought that it might be more palatable if we can increase the minimum studio, after that's. And finally, as I mentioned, we had, the town did um, I'm not sure if that's part of the materials that are in front of you today. They did, the memo from Mark Sorato stated December 3rd. He had a couple of changes to the form of the language. We certainly have no objections. We reviewed it, approved everything, and I did submit today, I did submit to staff a revised narrative for that included clean and redlined versions of the changes as we propose. So, I mean, as I said, I'm happy to go through some of the other changes that we had made over time, but in deference to the commission's time and out of respect for that, I'd be happy to open it up for questions or, or just take your lead as to how much more detail you'd like.
Thank you, Attorney Banano. Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, you know, I have a couple of comments. In terms of, you know, I, I guess I'm not necessarily for eliminating, you know, a minimum lot size. Um, you know, just looking at it, it's, it's difficult to believe that, you know, you can get more, less than a half an acre and still have something that, that is, is meaningful to be developed and is consistent with, you know, restoring historical buildings instead, unless you start looking at, you know, residential buildings and and, you know, I'm not sure that, you know, this is really going to, you know, be applied towards residential buildings versus, you know, some developed, you know, building system. And, and I, and the, the, the second item that I think that I, I find, I, I don't find agreeable is the fact that we're saying, you know, I had 10 units per half acre, which means that if you had an acre lot, you can actually put, you know, 20 units on, and, and that starts getting excessive. Again, I'm not sure, you know, what the actual lot coverage that they have there right now. But, you know, it appears that there, it basically, it's all parking lot and, and building. There's not very much left for, you know, greenery or grass or anything else, and, you know, I'm not, you know, it's, it's one of those kind of things where, you know, it just seems that, you know, what we need to do is minimize and limit, you know, these developed areas in, in how much they can actually put on a developed area. So with that said, you know, I'm still, you know, of the opinion that, you know, probably a, a minimum lot size or, or would be somewhere around a half an acre, so that it can't, you know, you can't get a quarter of acre, and then all of a sudden say, you know, I want to put 10 units on a quarter acre. You know, that just doesn't make any sense. Um, so with, you know, I, I think that what I would like to do is say that, you know, the, the maximum density in terms of for units would be, you know, a maximum of 10 units for any lot that was one acre or less. So that, you know, it's consistent with, you know, what, what we see here now, and it doesn't compromise anything, but it definitely doesn't allow an extreme condition to occur if somebody had a one acre lot.
If I could briefly respond to that? Uh, thank you. So one, it's, one thing that I forgot to mention, one of the changes that we made since the last time too, is we added language, and this was changed around a little bit format-wise by Attorney Sorato, but we added language such that an applicant can't, cannot make additions or alterations to the building footprint unless it's for access or some related use to access. So one thing that we want, and I should have brought this up earlier, but I think it'll hopefully make you feel a little bit better about that concern, is that we're not going to have a situation where you can have an applicant come and propose, uh, you know, has a historic building and then say, "I would like to, you know, to put 20, 20 units on a half an acre," for example, and then just add on, build on to that existing footprint to that building, and then try to jam in the units there. So we're limited to the conversion of not resident to multifamily, so that's gonna, that's going to eliminate some of these potential applicants. But then plus, you're stuck with the building footprint as it is, which in fact, we are uh, on our project anyways, and we've talked about the rigidity of the, of the, the walls, et cetera. We're, we're kind of stuck with what we're, what we're dealt with here. But this added language, uh, I hope will make you feel a little, a little more comfortable that nobody could come in and kind of, you know, pull a fat line, and then all of a sudden just add on to it and say, "We've got now a huge density issue."
But, but, but I guess what I'm really saying is that, you know, in the future, if there's another, you know, text change as somebody comes along and, and they look at, you know, the Hazerville, you know, district, and they say, "Well, geez, in Hazerville, you have 10 units per half acre. That means it's 20 units per acre." And I'd like to change, you know, this zone over here to say, you know, 20 units per acre because of the fact that Hazerville has, you know, 10 units per half acre. And, and, and that's the, the, the kind of thing that we want to avoid. What we want to do is we want to put a limit on it and, and sort of a limit that makes sense, rather than somebody come along and say, "Well, you allowed them to do that over there, so how come you're not allowing me to do it over here?" And, and, you know, we got to look at the whole town. We're not just looking at this specific area, but eventually it's going to get extrapolated to the other areas of town. And, and that's what, you know, we have to look at, is that, you know, we're, we're doing this for Hazerville area right now, but in reality, you know, it could be the Thompsonville area. It could be, you know, Enfield Street area, or it could be, you know, one of the other, you know, areas that we have, so, you know, it's, you know, you, we're, we're being, you know, short-sighted if we don't look at the entire town and how that could get adapted to the other areas. So, you know, I, I, you know, it's, it's planning and anticipating what could happen, not necessarily, "Oh, you can't do anything more than that over here." But, but that's somebody else in another section of town says, "Well, you, you did it over there, so why are you limiting us over here?" And I think that's my problem.
And so, so one, one possibility is to, to limit it to 10 units per, per acre, right? But you would have no minimum.
In terms of, if, if we're allowing, you know, the acreage to be less than an acre, so we have to sort of say, "One acre or less," but for at least one acre, it, it has to be, you know, a maximum of 10 units, and they have to have, you know, a, you know, a minimum of a half an acre, I guess. Because then all of a sudden, if somebody happens to have something that's a quarter of an acre, and somehow he can get 10 units on a quarter of an acre, he's going to say, "Well, that doesn't say there's a limit anywhere," and you'd let that happen in, in Hazerville, so why can't I do it over here? You know?
I.
You have to sort of think about the entire town, not necessarily just one little section over here.
I don't, I, in our, uh, you maybe can chime in, but I, I think that would be fine for us. And I understand certainly where you're coming from. As to the legality of an applicant saying, you know, "Because you did it here in Hazerville, we can do it here." I'll leave that as a separate issue, but because I, that necessarily correlates, but I understand, I understand your concerns. Uh, and they're legit, of course, um, but I think that would be fine with us as well, as having a minimum of half acre. We were, you know, we have, we're on .6, so again, our project is, it's unaffected. That does make sense, because we are talking generically regulations that affect everybody, and I'm a 10 per, uh, 10 per acre with a minimum acreage requirement at lot size of, of .5 acres. That, that sounds like, well, Art, you can chime in if I'm incorrect, but that sounds fine to me.
Yeah, it, it's not 10 per acre, it's up to 10 units for lots that are one acre or less, is, is what I'm hearing.
Right, that's what his concern is. 10 acres for one acre or less could be a quarter acre lot. That's what Commissioner Suzak, I think.
Well, yeah, yeah, so you, you could have your, your half acre, uh, minimum, but the way that it, the way that you folks were, were expressing it was that it's not 10 units per acre, uh, which could be, um, you know, looked at as, uh, we have a fraction of an acre, and therefore it's the fraction of 10 should be applied. What you had said was, um, that you could have no more than 10 units on a lot that was. a lot that was uh an acre down to a half an acre is what I think you're saying.
No, I I think, didn't you say you wanted a minimum of a half acre for and up to ten units, Rich?
Yes, yes. And in terms of, I think that what we have to do is first establish a minimum lot size and then establish a maximum density for a range of, you know, lot.
Yeah, the maximum number of units that could be on that uh half acre to one acre parcel.
There from a half an acre to an acre, you you only get ten units regardless of of whether you're at the bottom of of the capital limit and and that keeps things on a fair, you know, playing field for everybody.
That sounds good. That sounds fine.
I'll say, Rich. Yeah, okay. Um I I have a cou- couple of concerns here. The the Hazardville Design District, does that include any of School Street, Maple Street, any of the side streets there? Or is it just Hazard Avenue? Because there's a lot of larger, older homes. And looking at the attorney's opinion, you know, he says adaptive reuse of vacant, deteriorated, or underutilized buildings or structures. So there's three, there's two, three, and four families along Hazard Avenue that are on lots larger than a half an acre. So these homes will fit into this category because it doesn't exclude residential houses.
Our proposed language, though, does have, it it's under subsection four, it's the conversion of only existing non-residential buildings to multifamily dwellings.
Okay, Commissioner Higley. You're muted, Jenny. You're muted.
Okay, sorry. Can you touch on my concern about underutilized vacant properties? But I did have one other one. Section eight point seventy B subsection III says, any property located within the HDDA may apply for development approval under a plan design special permit. It equals I'm to say such special permit may allow a use of land, buildings, and other structures and related site development not permitted within the section, within the existing zoning district. So you can have anything you want in the Hazardville Development District with that. I don't think that's a good idea. That's all my concerns.
That's actually existing wording.
Yeah.
I know, but but since we're looking at it, I wanted to bring it up. I don't think that's a good idea.
So, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I might, I just want to um just state that I think we decided to get rid of the minimum acreage because there's only a few places in Hazardville that would actually fit this bill, and one is the Hazardville Institute. And that's on point one, two acres. So that would be disqualified from this amendment for this section of the regulation. If we have a minimum acreage of uh half an acre.
What's the Hazardville Hotel on?
Oh, yeah.
Go back.
While you're looking at a, uh Commissioner Alimo.
Question for staff, Jen or Lori. Um the memo dated from Attorney Serrato dated December third. Has um the recommendations and concerns all been met? And we're talking just specifically about the subject line is Hazardville Design District, correct?
Yeah, that's what these regulations are for the.
Okay, so I'm sure we're just talking specifically about the Hazardville Design District. And has the recommendations and concerns of Attorney Serrato been met?
So the regulations, the updated version that Attorney Banano sent in came in late today, so I didn't see them until the meeting. They came in after five, so I'm thinking probably, um but I haven't had a chance to look.
Well, yeah, something, you know, we have an opinion from our, you know, the town attorney here and his recommendations and concerns. He outlines them, so we did have something come in today, so I think if we could see if we've met the attorney's concerns, make it a little easier on me anyway. Thank you.
If I may, for the record, uh we accept all of his concerns and suggestions. There is one. I guess there's one point where it he he brings up a point that the commission may wish to establish a definition for a term underutilized, but so that's obviously up for your uh just uh decision. But everything else that he suggested by changes, I can at least for the record uh state that we did make those changes. We're we're fine with those changes. I understand you have to review that, not just take my word, but I'm just telling you that's our position. There's no problem.
And staff, that's, you guys seen that? Did you have time to review that when that came in today?
Um, it came in after five, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. That would be my concern, that we met the uh recommendations of our attorney.
Well, most of them are just the language. And like Attorney Banano said about the uh the word underutilized, which I agree is a very broad word.
We have to work on that word.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Alimo. Commissioner DeGray.
Thank you.
Well, we definitely need to do something about underutilized because that's so subjective to what Jenny thinks is underutilized and what I think is underutilized or Ken thinks is underutilized, all different. Also, um, looking through our regulations, I I know that they want to get the biggest bang for their buck out of this, but um the, to make a one-bedroom, six fifty, which is fine, but to make a two-bedroom eight hundred square feet, when every other regulation throughout town says a thousand or eleven hundred. I I how, and I understand they want to do two bedrooms. But being in this industry of um property management, one bedroom's fly. I mean, we can't we don't have enough one bedrooms. Uh people are always looking for those, so I have an issue reducing the square footage down to eight hundred square feet for a two-bedroom. We're nowhere else in town. We allow that. We had a very successful uh school renovation down in Thompsonville. Made all one bedrooms, turned into a beautiful property. So that's my concern is, you know, decreasing the uh square footage to a two-bedroom from a thousand square feet down to eight hundred. So I think we need to decide what underutilized means, or just take it out to read readaptive uh use of vacant deteriorate or deteriorating buildings and their site.
Thank you, Commissioner DeGray. Lori, did you come up with the hazard, uh the hotel?
The hu- the hotel is on point two eight acres.
Okay, point two eight.
So really, those are the only other two buildings that we think fit into this proposal.
E- explain to me again how you don't think those larger homes along Hazard Avenue don't fit into this.
Because they're residential.
But four more, five units.
And and are are they deteriorated and 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 you know, basically falling down or underutilized?
Well, that's again, underutilized is a huge word because if you have a single-family ten thousand square foot home, you could classify that as underutilized. And you could make ten thousand square foot apartments in there, which would utilize the property much better. A five-family home now becomes a commercial property, not residential.
So this says conversion of only existing non-residential buildings to multifamily. So if they're residential, they don't qualify.
Right, but a five-family home, some of those homes along Hazard Avenue, has anybody checked to see if they're over five units? Because they're no longer residential if they're over five units. They become a commercial property. Because we just went through this with the Maple Street um application when he wanted to convert the two to a three family. And and I just, I want to be very careful with this because, you know, definitions like Attorney Banano brought up are very, well, no, I'm sorry, Attorney Serrato, they're very broad. And if you were to go buy a five-family residential home right now, it's classified commercial. And a lot of those houses along Hazard Avenue have large lots. I I just would, I I really want to look into that.
You know, I I think we've got to realize that we're not trying to we're not trying to make this fit what is around everywhere else. I mean, this is an adaptive reuse of a building that is, has been vacant. Will continue to be vacant if this doesn't get approved, because if they can't make money doing this, they're not going to do it. So, you know, as far as like the density, you know, I I don't think it should be an issue. It's, this is what will uh work for the market and work for the economic development and and for the client.
And last year, to make to make your medical, last year, medical offices would have worked for this client and this building.
But unfortunately, the market isn't there.
Oh, oh, that's right. It changed in twelve months. So that that things change, a- and we're trying to, you know, fit a round peg in a square hole here to make this building work. And, you know, the mall, for instance. I mean, that is totally underutilized, so we're going to allow them to put in five thousand apartments?
No, because they're not.
Because that's the best use for the owner of the property. I'm looking at the best use of the area.
What if we just um say for those three plot properties that this is eligible, that only those three properties are eligible?
And you don't consider that spot zoning?
No, because there's more than one spot.
Yeah, but they don't even touch each other, Lori.
That there, there's spot zoning all over town, quite honestly. I've seen it.
I understand that, but spot zoning is against our regulations. And just because it was done previously wrong, doesn't mean we want to continue doing it wrong.
I'm I'm just trying to think out of the box as to how we can move this forward, because we've talked about this for months and months and and this is their second application. They've made great strides, and I just, you know, I I'm just trying to move things forward.
What if we said it uh only HVBL zoned properties? Or instead of?
HVBL?
What was that again, Jen?
There's, so Hazardville has HVBL, HV thirty-three, HV forty-four. Actually, I think this one might actually be HV thirty-three.
We are.
It was a thought, but.
Right, and that covers a lot of property.
And with all due respect, with regard to the spot zoning, it's only legal if it's not in harmony with the plan of conservation and development. So the spot, you really have to have the two components. One, it only affects a few number of parcels and and the most important one from Fuller, Connecticut, is stating that it has to be something that really just serves the benefit of that parcel. If it serves the benefit of the town at a greater standpoint, then it's not spot zoning. And so we're trying to adaptively reuse this, which is entirely harmony with the plan of conservation and development in this specific district.
Right, but you but you just said, if it benefits the entire town, not particular property, what you're doing benefits only this property.
Well, I'm saying.
Only to the benefit of the property and the owners of the property. It doesn't benefit anybody else around that property. Forget about the town of Enfield.
Well, I think it does provide housing for people. That's that's needed, this type of housing in this area. Plus, it 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 takes a blighted property or a property that has the potential to be blighted and adaptively reuses it. So I mean, I get it. Yeah, sure, just the owner is going to benefit by 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 taking in rental income. But the citizens of the town, bringing people into the town, living in the town, make, you know, it whether it's apartments that they're making it their own, they're using it, they're productive citizens. I mean, that's what, that's what the plan and cultivation and development wants in this area, one of the things that they want.
All right, Commissioner, Commissioner, Commissioner Alimo.
Yeah, my my concern would be, um, and I think Lori touched on it a little bit, if we don't find a way here to to work on this and get this mov- moving forward, you know, we chance, you know, a blighted building, you know, and we don't want to see, you know, that happen and Hazardville go by the way of Thompsonville. Because, believe me, I've seen it, lived it, and I, it's not a good picture, so I I would like to see if we can work tonight to figure out a way so we don't end up with that and, you know, to help the, you know, the the old Hazardville center of town. If there's a way we could do it here tonight, I think it would help, you know, that particular area. Um, as far as the rest of the town, um, you know, it's it's revenue. I mean, um, it's not a blighted property, so that that's my feeling, and I just don't want to see this thing get boarded up and just sit there for forever. That's my concern.
Commissioner Suzak.
You you know, I I agree in terms of, you know, I think that, you know, I, like you said, I I don't want to I'm I'm looking at the the entire town and and also Hazardville area in terms of, you 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 know, what I want to do is is create, you know, a situation where we could do some adaptive reuse of buildings. But but al- also, you know, put a limit on how much density they they could have. And he, you know, and what type of buildings that we could utilize. Um, and and I'm I'm with, totally with you, Chairman, you know, Nelson, that, you know, there are some larger residential structures that could be modified and that would sort of also meet the criteria that we're trying to establish here and, you know, and and I think that, you know, that that's one of the pitfalls that we 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 have to, you know, go try to guard against is that we don't, we don't have, you know, all of a sudden a slew of, you know, modification or or again, buildings that just have to be internally modified, not externally modified to create, you know, an environment that's that's either similar or, you know, to what we're trying to achieve here. But um, so I, you know, I I think that it, you know, I I agree with, you know, the concerns and and possibly, you know, we we can use larger, you know, units also. I I, again, I I would prefer to see larger units than than smaller units because they seem to make more sense. But that we we really need to make, you know, some kind of a progress that will allow for some adaptive reuse of, you know, more commercial type of buildings that not, you know, residential buildings and and, you know, and and in terms of, you know, I I, right now, realistically, you know, the 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 Hazardville Institute Conservancy has a lease for ninety-nine years, and I think that their lease isn't going to be up for another sixty years. So, you know, I'm not that concerned that that Hazardville Institute building is is going to be converted to um some residential units. But um, and and I can't speak for, you know, the Hazardville, the the hotel, um that that's there, you know, across the street. But I think that, you know, what we need to do is is look towards the future, but also look at the entire town so that, you know, we we don't get comparisons that it's allowable there, but it's not allowable here, and why not that type of thing? And and I, I just want to reiterate that, that. Um, and I think that, you know, maybe we we put some stronger language in describing, you know, the applicable types of structures that are are allowed and, you know, you know, so that, you know, we can't, so that these these larger mansions don't get modified into, you know, this section. So, but with that said, I, you know, I think that, you know, I I agree, we need to somehow make some progress and and allow for, you know, some adaptive reuse, but, you know, try to limit exactly what we're trying to achieve too.
Right, I I I agree, and, you know, we've got to look at Thompsonville also. You got the Strand Movie Theater that I believe fits this definition. Um, it's on over a half an acre, so somebody could buy that and turn it into a ten-unit apartment building.
Correct, and and that's what I'm saying is that, you know.
I understand that.
So the town owns that and it's coming down.
I I, okay, the building next door. I, okay, the building next door to it, the La Mania Center.
That's also coming down.
But I think in those areas, they can go, and excuse me, but I think in those areas, can't they go higher? I think there's, they can go five or six stories in a Thompsonville District zone.
That's right, so.
I think all me and Richard trying to establish is there are other areas that this could potentially be done. And if you allow it here, how do you refuse it someplace else?
But why do you want to refuse it someplace else? If it's if it's going to reuse a historic structure that you want to preserve. Then it's a good thing. But I will talk, I mean, you you'd say the Strand and La Mania, the town is in the process of getting grants to have them destroyed. Especially the Strand. And we're we're moving the social services and youth services out of there, and that's going to be a new T O D development eventually. That was what, that's what all of those plans and and studies called for, so that's what we're moving forward with. But I mean, you you act like doing this would be a bad thing in other areas. I think it would be a great thing to. Have the adaptive reuse in other areas, but I do think that they should be neighborhoods specific. And this one is neighborhood specific to Hazardville.
You think it's a good thing to take all our commercial historic buildings and convert them into residential parfa- properties, Lori?
I I think that those structures that are that are being that are historic. And cannot have a normal reuse, we've got to allow something for them. I mean, what else can this structure be?
It could be anything. If you opened your eyes and you did research and tried to find different uses, exactly what they're doing with the mall. So if somebody came in and said they wanted to put a strip club in that building. You'd be okay with that because we're restoring a historic building. It's a use.
I don't think that's a proper, I don't think that that's what in in uh. In alignment with the plan of conservation and development, and I don't think that's a desired use anywhere. But I mean, this this to me is, I mean, I don't see any problem with turning this into a residential structure. I think that that's the norm of. These types of of old historic buildings, that we have to find something that does work. We found somebody that actually owns it that wants to do this. And I'm just not sure what, why it's, um. You know, you you're you're acting like it's a a negative thing, and I think it's a very positive thing. If we had somebody else that said that, you know, they wanted to turn this into, um. A bunch of restaurants, I'd say, well, that's great, but there's no parking, so that's probably not a good use for the site. Um, you know, we've got to look at what is available for the site. There's a limited parking. We talked about, you know, putting retail in there, but. There's limited parking, and then you're gonna have people wanting to put up signs with the with the, you know, the beautiful historic structure. I mean, I, so I mean, if we could think of other uses, that's great, let's put that into the regulations, but they're proposing a use. That's going to work for that building and preserve it.
Okay, Commissioner DeGray.
I forgot to take my hand down, but um I hear what everybody is saying. And I understand we've got somebody who wants to do really a good thing for this building. I just have concerns over sizes of units that we're going to start reducing sizes of units. And we still need a definition for underutilized. So, and if it's, or this verbiage only fits one building. As far as I know, that to me is still spot zoning, so unless. And like Kenny said, there is a building, there's a a very large building. Off right across from Parker Street on Hazard Avenue. I don't know how many units are in that. But it could be five or six in that, I I don't know. I see a lot of cars there all the time, so I I think. I'm concerned that there are place out there on Hazard Avenue in that historic area that have. Multi families already, and if I can change the size of the unit. And get even more out of it and get more bang for my buck, and I have this. Multi-family, maybe two or three family place, and I can get up to five more or six more units out of it. What what's gonna stop that? I I'm I'm really torn. I understand this man wants to do something really good. But I also need to know what other. Pieces on Hazard Avenue in the historical area in that district are more than. That have at least five units or more. And and it has nothing to do with this man, and it has to do with my piece of mind. And if there's been changes that were offered and sent to the planning office at five o'clock and we haven't seen them. I have concerns about that too.
Can I say something?
Go ahead.
I think that there's a lot of negative things, that's one positive, to save an old building. However, I hear your questions and your concerns. Write them down, give it to us, let me see if we can get with solutions. If we can do that, then we can go ahead. I don't want anybody to have so many concerns and me pushing, no. Put them down, give it to us, let's see if we can get it with the. Accommodate them, answer all the questions, concerns, and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
I may just make one more comment, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, so with regard to the. Is it possible that multifamily houses that exist like a five family, if they could be converted? I think we can fix that with a pretty simple tweak to the language. As I said, we, the current proposed language is the conversion of only existing non-residential buildings. So perhaps we can say buildings that are not zoned residential or currently being used residentially. Or maybe something more eloquent that can solve that problem though, so. That we don't have buildings that may be deemed commercial, even though they're a five family. We could, we could rule, we could come up with some language, I think that would.
Right, well, that that would be, a- as you know, in doing real estate and stuff. A commercial property is considered five or more units, so somehow the definition has to be clear. That it would not include. Those particular properties, you know, I I mean, that's just one of my concerns and. Um, Mr. Con- uh, Constantino's point, you know, I I do believe it is spot zoning. Which I'm not okay with, but because of its historic value to the town. I I think I could work around that, but every single older town that has gone through redevelopment. They do not fill all their commercial or residential buildings full of residential. It's all. Business on the first floor and residential above it, and that's how those towns come back and thrive. Any town, you look at East Hampton, you know, Newburyport, Massachusetts, all all these beautiful towns, that's how it's done. It's not just pack them full of residential houses. You have to maintain a balance between businesses and residents. And I have no problem putting residential upstairs on this. I would even adjust the. The square footage of the apartment, so he could do all one-bedroom apartments up there, work something. I understand it's a tough building with the block walls and everything, work with him to make that possible. On the fir- on the se- second and third floor. If we put, you know, two or three businesses on the first floor, I don't care if they're craft stores, it doesn't matter, but it it. It brings the charm back to Hazardville. That's what Hazardville is. And that's what the plan of conservation and development is trying to save. That's the way I see it.
That's what I suggested at the last meeting, but I guess Lori, you're saying that you guys talked and that can't happen.
Happen either, Frank.
I never said it, I never said it could not happen. I said that you, as a commission. Found that when we started talking about signage and, you know, putting signage up on this old historic building and in front of it. That and, you know, also this, how is the foot traffic going to work and do we have enough parking? And the answer was, you didn't like the signage and and they don't have enough parking for having retail there.
That's what I would have liked to have seen, but it doesn't work.
Yeah, but the thing is, is that the rest of these regulations do allow to you to have those choices. This is just an additional choice as to how you might be able to develop a site.
Right, and that's, our regulation has those choices in it because that's what the town wants. And parking in Hazardville and Thompsonville and all these other towns that have been done, ninety percent of the parking is on the roads. There's a parking lane on both sides of Hazard Avenue to accommodate this. The goal is to get people out and walking around, walk down to his building on the first floor and get a slice of pizza or whatever. You know, a- and, you know, I I just think it would be in addition to Hazardville instead of taking away from it. If we did that with. All the buildings, got rid of all the businesses down there, we're gonna have another Thompsonville. Because that's what happened down there. You took all the business out, and what are we left with?
This is only three buildings that could happen to.
What's that?
At this point, if we if somehow we are able to take the five families out, we're talking about three buildings that that this. Section of the regulations would be applicable. The rest of the, the rest of Hazardville has that opportunity. To do all that retail and and.
I I understand, and how you don't define that as spot zoning bewilders me. Commissioner Suzak.
Because I just want to add that, you know, there is a, you know, so some plans that were made to add parking, you know. For the Hazerville Institute and for, you know, the Hazerville Center, you know, adjacent to the town property at at three twenty-seven. You know, that that rare lot that that the town owns, so so realistically. You know, it and and I would agree that, you know, the thing is, you know, you could have, you know, potentially some retail. And and I was looking at the basement again in terms of, you know, right now, we're saying that the the basement is is inaccessible, but. You know, possibly with doing some mi- some minor modifications, we can get, you know, some. You know, I guess, re- some potential retail and and not necessarily, you know, say that it it has to be, but. That the fact that it could possibly be, you know, with with a little bit of reworking of of that front, you know, entryway. Um, to allow that and and the fact that, you know, parking would be on the street, you know, for, you know. People who wanted to visit that, you know, that that potential retail. And that there is going, you know, potentially going to be some parking that the town's going to develop, you know, for. You know, that the community and the center itself to to alleviate some of, you know, the congestion that occurs there, you know, during, you know. Office hours or I guess, you know, resident, rest restaurant hours or whatever you you want to, you know, call it, but that. You know, and 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 again, it's it's kind of, you know, trying to keep it as open as possible, but, you know, having some potential. And that, you know, we could sort of, you know, indicate that, you know, the parking is available at at the, you know, town parking lot. For for this area if there was retail on a lower level, so. Um, so with that said, I think that, you know, there there is a lot of possibilities and and that we shouldn't necessarily, you know. Not, you know, but allow for, you know, some other potentials to occur, you know, residential and some retail. And I think that we're all agreeing on that and that, you know, if if. Yet again, I, you know, I I don't know exactly, you know, what the plans are, what the building construction is and and, but the fact that, you know, there is, you know, a main access. And it it might not necessarily, it goes up, but somehow it could go go down a little bit too and and sort of connect into that corridor. Because I'm looking at the plan that that was developed, and there's a corridor down there, and there's two storage rooms. Um, and another storage room underneath, you know, the entry stair, so. You know, if you eliminate that that center storage room and and you create, you know, an access down into the basement, that possibly could be, you know. Access to the lower level and some, you know, subterranean, you know, retail, it could be, you know, again, a. A record store or, you know, again, a craft store or something, that that doesn't get a lot of, you know, traffic, but, you know. People are interested in utilizing, so.
Or it could be a doctor's satellite office and attorney Banano's satellite office and his architect's satellite office. And that's how he maximizes his profit by using that lower level, and if it was a full basement. I would have a totally different attitude, but the building kind of is like a split level there, that lower level has some natural light coming in. And if he can maximize it and put, like you said, Rich, a craft store. E- even if he gets ten dollars a month rent, it's more than what he would get if deemed it storage only. Go ahead, Constant. Go ahead, sir.
Mister Chairman, give us a leeway, a guidance, how to accommodate. The need of restoring a building and satisfy your concerns, because right now we hear. Ideas will fly from one topic to another, but we have to address the challenge, how to restore a building. Keep it viable, not not making money, be able to support it, because that's why I fail, and also respect. The principles, vision of your town. Give us a leeway so we can work around it to make it big top.
I understand. Commissioner Alamo.
Yeah, I I don't have any problem, uh, we we were talking about Hazerville and Thompsonville for on-street parking at all. Because, you know, we're working with buildings, just like this building, that we're trying to make, you know, work into a parking plan. When the building was built, when people were going by in a horse and buggy. So, you know, the there, we're we're trying to do something that's impossible, so the, you know, on-street parking, I don't have a problem with that at all. That's how it used to be. So, I mean, that works for me.
Okay, at this point, I'm gonna open it up to the public and see if they have any suggestions or ideas. Um, at this point, I'd like to open up to the public, Public Hearing P H twenty-nine eighty-six. Um, in regards to three fifty-nine Hazard Avenue, converting it into a nine-family apartment building. Is there anybody who would like to speak in favor? Against or has questions, comments, or concerns about this project? Please speak up, state your name and address for the record. Going for the first time. Going for the second time. Chris, go ahead.
Hi there. Uh, my name is Chris Antonia. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I live, um. Uh, on Montana Road, eighteen Montana Road in North Thompsonville. Um, I just want to express my support for the amendment, uh, to reduce the minimum lot size and support the reuse and development of additional housing. Uh, in Hazardville. You know, as well as, uh, you know, as talked about, uh, retail, possible retail use as well. Um, I I I saw the concerns about the minimum parking. Um, I think that two spaces per unit is, uh, more than comfortable, um, in some cases. You know, could be too high for one-bedroom units. But otherwise, I do think that there's a great opportunity to make housing, uh, more housing available, especially in a great walkable part of town. Um, and especially being able to reuse existing buildings. You know, I'm in North Thompsonville, so this proposal does not directly impact me or my family. Um, but I do advocate for increasing housing supply, especially diverse. Housing units and multifamily units, and I just want to express my support for zoning improvements that allow us. To welcome new residents to the community.
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else going for the second time? And going for the third time? Seeing none? Commissioners, how do you want to proceed?
Well, can we proceed if there's been changes, text changes are that were received today that we? Haven't seen yet?
Commissioner Suzak.
Mister Chair, you know, I'd I'd like, you know, the the thing is, you know, I think that we we've expressed some concerns for staff. To to address, and and I know that, you know. I guess, M- Mister Constantino had had indicated that what he would like us to do is give him a synopsis of what our concerns are. And that his team would a- address those concerns and and and, you know, work on possibly language to eliminate, you know. The conversion of of, you know, larger residential structures to to conform with with this, you know, particular. Your text change and, you know, possibly, you know, throw in some, you know. If if possible, you know, some retail, you know, and not necessarily making a mandate, but, you know, always open the door for some possibility of. That occurring, you know, and not not close the door on on that, you know, particular, you know, possibility. And that, you know, we we allow the, you know, applicant to come back with, you know, again. A modified text change that that sort of incorporates, you know, our concerns for our next meeting and, you know, like you said. And, you know, like you said, you know, I, I feel that, you know, if, if we limit the max- maximum number of units. And, and actually, you know, put a limit on the size, that, you know, we, we have more or less, you know. Open the door for, you know, some other things to happen, but specifically for this particular, you know, application. Or it's not really an application, but this particular, you know, building lot that, that is of, you know. And again, I think, I think that it needs to be, you know, saved and it needs to be salvaged. And, you know, I think that working together, we, we should be able to come up with something that, that makes some sense in terms of, you know, I think we've. We've all expressed our concerns and we've all, you know, sort of, you know, are, are working towards something. And it's just a matter of making that final step. And, you know, and I did look at the, you know, the, the, the unit sizes and, and they, they are restricted in terms of by, you know, the demising walls. That, that are, you know, for the old classrooms and they're always somewhere around eight hundred to eight hundred and fifty square feet for a two-bedroom. So, you know, I think that if we try to, you know, make it a thousand square feet, it's never gonna fit in that building. And, and, you know, that, that, you know, it, it's. You know, unfortunate, but you know, if, if we do wanna at least, you know, try to, you know, save, save that building, that, that we, we, we sort of. You know, modify our thinking a little bit for that particular location. And normally I would be against it, but I don't see how we, we can actually solve it, so.
I agree with ninety percent of what you said, Rich, and I think if we were to maintain the mixed use of the building. And, you know, maybe not today, maybe not a year from now, but if he could find a tenant or if things changed with COVID. And he decided to put his doctor's office, even a satellite office down in the lower level, that he has that option. And it leaves us, following the plan of conservation and development, with allowing him to do this down the road. I understand the building needs a lot of work and he's gotta get going on it, so I'm not tying him up. Saying you've gotta put in three commercial buildings before you can do residential, not at all. But, you know, the signage could be easily solved with a small pole sign or something. And I'm not worried about any of those details right now, because we are putting a round peg in a square hole. And trying to make this the best use for the property. And I think mixed use keeps us uniform along Hazard Avenue. Those homes that are residential, they're not mixed-use houses now. So, they, they're not commercial, so they wouldn't be able to do this because they can't put a business on their first floor. They would have to make some serious changes. So, that may eliminate that whole side of the things that we were concerned about too. Parking, I don't have an issue with parking. All the older neighborhoods that have been revitalized are on-street parking. I am a hundred percent aware of how the town is trying to create parking in Hazardville. And this is just another piece of the puzzle that will work with that parking. So, that's my only fa- the square footage of the apartments, I understand he is restrained by the building. Eight hundred square feet for a two-bedroom apartment works, trust me. Seven of our beach houses are eight hundred square foot two-bedroom apartments. That's what they are. You're not gonna have a family in there with ten kids. There's laws you have to follow as far as how many people per bedroom. And the age of children, and I'm sure he'll follow all those laws. So, I'm willing to work with him on all those things and give him the opportunity to put a business. Cause that's what his original intent was, to move his office into the building, part of the building. And, you know, we're all crock, got our fingers crossed that this is gonna be gone with twenty twenty. Twenty twenty-one's gonna be a new year for all of us and he's gonna have a very productive building. His office is gonna be up and running on the first floor. And who knows, his nine tenants could be his patients. How much better does that get? You know, and I heard Attorney Bonano say he's looking for a satellite office, so you make sure he takes another one. So, that's where I'm going with it. Um, I, I just don't see a full residential building being in the plan of conservation. I would like to see the building saved. I, I was, me and Councilman Crowley were huge on saving Higgins. And maybe if we had come up with something like this on Higgins, it might not have been torn down, but it was. So, if we can work with you to make this happen, and I'd really like to make this happen next meeting. Because I'm not one to keep postponing meetings again and again and again. I'm telling you, if you can make this work, what I just discussed, you have my support a hundred percent to pull this off. And hopefully it maximizes the use for the building for you. We do apartment storage in the back of the lower level, so you meet the storage requirement on the apartments. We can make it work. So, that's where I stand. Commissioners, how do you feel? Rich has already said how he feels. You know, let this gentleman know. Go ahead, Commissioner Alimo.
Right there with the chairman, Nelson.
That's good, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Petronella, Commissioner Grillo.
Well, I, I feel that the, uh, we shouldn't be making the application for the applicant. I, I say let him make his application. If, if he wants to apply for nine, uh, residential units. I have no issue with the apartments. I, I, I really don't. Ninety-nine percent of old schools are converted into apartments, uh, you very rarely see them into, uh, uh, modified into. Commercial properties. Now, I said it before, um, the, I think that he would have a big hindrance. Uh, trying to, trying to do commercial because of the ADA requirements. Uh, I, I could be wrong, but, uh, you know. He, he may have to put in, uh, a large, uh, handicap ramp out front to, to access it. If it is, uh, commercial, uh, down below. So, uh, you know, again, I don't wanna speak for him and I don't wanna tell him what to do. Um, if, if he wants to stay on his apartment, uh, I, I certainly have no issue with that. And, and would support it as far as the size of the units. I have no issue, uh, with the square footage, uh, that they're proposing as well. So, uh, so be it. Um, you know, if, if he wants to modify it and change it to, uh, uh, commercial down below. That, that'll be his prerogative, but I certainly don't wanna coax him into doing it, uh, or mandate it, so, or, or pressure him to do it.
Commissioner Grillo.
Yeah, um, the applicant seems like he wants to work with us, so. Me personally feel that we, we need to work with him. Uh, he seems like he wants to pretty much a- anything he could. But, um, I, I would like to see the commercial part of it down there, um, below. But if it's not gonna be able to happen, uh, either way for me, I, I'd like to work with them if we could.
I'm just looking at it that it's empty space now. They, there's nothing going in on the first floor, so why would we limit him? Being able to put in, uh, his office or something like that. We'd be tying his hands by allowing him to have that option. It's only beneficial to him. If he can't pull it off because of expense like Commissioner Petronella said, then he can't pull it off. But it's still, it maintains our con- plan of conservation and development with the mixed use. He's meeting the mixed use requirement. Commissioner DeGray.
I agree if he can, um. I might, oh, I agree that if he can meet the mixed use, that'd be great. Um, I understand his situation. I think we're trying to work with him, but we're also trying to. Have foresight on what the whole town can be. So, um, if he comes back with, uh, the changes that he's heard tonight. I, I'm, I don't have a problem with it. I think we need to do something with that building before it falls down.
And, and I just wanna be clear to the applicant, you don't have to do any of these. You could, like Commissioner Petronella said, you could go forward and see how the commission decides to vote. But I think your willingness to try to maximize the use of your building. I, I hope you see that my view is trying to do exactly that for you. Jenny, did you have anything you wanted to add? Nope. Okay, so how does the commission wanna proceed?
Can we continue this public hearing?
We have. Commissioner Suzak.
Mister Chair, I'll make a motion that we continue public hearing. Let me find it over here. Ah, too many pages. Twenty-nine eighty-six to our next meeting to allow the applicant to address, you know, our concerns. And that, you know, we are definitely wanna move forward with this project. And, you know, allow this to happen so that, you know, we're looking forward to a resolution at our next meeting. Of January, hold on. Doesn't say, January something.
I believe it's a fourteen.
January fourteen?
Yep, the fourteen.
Okay, January fourteenth.
Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second by Commissioner DeGray. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All in favor and have a great holiday season and we will see you in January.
Thank you very much. Much appreciate. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Okay, moving on, new public hearings. Seeing none? Old business, seeing none? New business.
Motion that we add the election of the CROG rep- representative to our agenda. Um, under, you know, new business.
Sure. Motion's made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second. It all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none? It's unanimous. Okay, new business, appointing CROG members. Who are our existing members?
That's Jenny and Mary Scott.
Okay, Jenny, would you like reappointment? You're muted. You're muted.
Okay.
You're still.
I didn't get the schedule for the last time around and, and, you know. I asked for it. I asked Mary for it, but she was busy with other things, so she didn't, I didn't get it, so feel bad. I didn't go to any.
Okay. Volunteers?
What does, what does it entail? Is there monthly meetings or quarterly meetings?
Every other month.
Uh, usually held in West Hartford by Blueback Square. Right, right. Currently, if they're having them, they're, they're going virtual, of course.
Oh, so you do it from home. So, I see Commissioner Alimo and Commissioner Higley volunteered.
I just got a question. I had a question. I didn't volunteer.
I asked that, what we heard. Are you interested, Frank?
Sure.
All right, Jenny?
As long as I get the schedule, it'd be nice to know where, where and when.
Can we make sure that happens, Lori and Jen?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm pretty sure she got it, but that.
Send it, return, receive.
We will, we will make sure that it goes out.
Send it, return, receipt requested.
You know, I'll have to confess that I, I get notifications all the time. Um, because I, I, one time before, you know, I guess Mary and Virginia are between, before, when, when Commissioners. Scott and Higley got involved, I was, the delay is on and, and, and I always get them, but yet, but I'm no longer. And I could forward it to the Commissioners that, that we, um, point, so that, you know, we, we definitely at least get them that information. Cause I, I, I do get those notifications all the time.
Well, maybe. You shouldn't be getting them directly from CROG.
Correct.
Right, maybe it's. Then your information and then you should be getting direct.
Well, I was having trouble with my email, so maybe they sent them and I didn't get them. I just got my email all squared away.
So, the information's gonna come from CROG itself, not from the Town Planner's Office. Once we get on.
That is correct.
So, maybe.
Will you send me the first one?
You know, I can send you, uh, you know, I, I can send you the last one that I did get and, and so that you.
Perfect.
You know, what.
We'll make sure you get it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you, if you get the one from Rich, send it to Frank also. You know, he can let you know when he sends it to make sure it doesn't go into your spam folder or something like that, cause that's possible what was happening too.
Yeah, yeah.
Rich's commitment to the plan of conservation, um, along with me is just, there's no way we could do this, so. Okay, so all in favor of Frank Alimo and Commissioner Higley being our representatives for CROG?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Seeing none? Congratulations.
Thank you.
The, the meetings are boring. They are.
Okay, other business adopting of the twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two calendar meeting dates.
Make a motion, oh wait, hold on. Do, uh, and only because I'm looking at the, the dates. I see that we have a meeting for December twenty-third. Is that something we wanna do? Is the week of Christmas? And a lot of people, hopefully a lot of people will be busy going to family or having family.
Well, it looks like if we had a meeting this month, it would be the same. So, is that probably why we're not having one, correct?
Correct, the twenty-fourth.
It would be Christmas Eve this year.
Right, okay, just see, yep.
I'm just thinking.
The one in December and then one in.
November.
Yeah, thank you. And, and then we take August off.
Right, so.
Yes.
Everybody in favor of removing December twenty-third?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion as amended.
I make a motion, we accept the, um, schedule of meetings for twenty. Twenty-one.
And twenty twenty-two. Motion's made in second. It all in favor? Say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Okay, and now for the Town of Enfield Aquifer Protection Agency Schedule twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two meeting schedule. Same thing, I would request that we remove the December twenty-third meeting. Everybody in agreement?
Yes.
Mister Chair, I, I, uh, uh, that, that six-thirty start on the aquifer, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, no meeting in August and we're gonna maintain the November eighteenth meeting, cause that's when our regular planning and zoning meeting is. So, I'm good with that. If everybody else is, I'll entertain a motion as amended.
So, move.
Second.
Motion's made in seconded. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Unanimous? Okay. Uh, Commissioner, I'm sorry, correspondence? Anyone? Seeing none, Commissioners' correspondence? Seeing none?
Ken, I got, I got something. I think, uh, so we're not having a meeting this month and didn't, um, Charlie announce last meeting that he wasn't seeking reappointment? So, I just wanted to be able to say goodbye to him. He's not here tonight, but, or do we send him?
Don't we have a special meeting coming up? Is there a special meeting this month? No?
I don't think.
Okay.
I just wanna wish him, wish him good and say goodbye. I don't know if the office, the planner's office will send him something, a card or. But is it, what, didn't he say that? He wasn't redoing his?
Yep.
Right, so tonight, this would, if he was here tonight, it would be his last meeting.
Yes.
He served for many years, I believe.
Yeah. Jen, how many years did, uh, Charlie serve on the commission?
Charlie, wow, I'm not entirely sure.
Twelve, maybe?
Well.
It'd be more than that.
I think it's around tw- I don't think so.
Well.
Maybe.
Regardless of, I think, you know, some kind of appropriate, you know, uh, goodbye to him or a card from the office.
Yeah.
Since he's not here tonight. I'm sorry?
I think we should give him his plate, you know, that goes on the, uh, on the dais when we're sitting there. I think we should give him his plate, you know, that goes on the, uh, on the dais when we're sitting there.
Remember the protocol. I'm new, I'm new to the commission, so I don't know what is, what you've guys done in the past, but some kind of recognition.
Yep, it's pretty standard, um, that we give them the, uh, the nameplate from the chamber, so we'll be sure to do that.
That's all right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Town Planners Report.
Um, um, train station perspective, we are, we've had a meeting with the DOT a week or so, I guess last week, and they have realized that they can do what they would like to do on the Hartford line without doing the double tracking above Winter Locks and they are on board, no pun intended, to, uh, get the train station in Enfield. So it's.
They're popping a champagne in Winter Locks today.
So, um, it's, you know, it looks like it's good to, it's a go. Um, we're looking at, uh, design currently and we're going to be meeting with them in January, I think first week in January. So, I mean, that's like fabulous news, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're really jazzed about that. Um, P S T D survey should be out live, we're hoping next week. So we'll send you the links as soon as we have that up and running. Um, Don Poland just sent today, um, his review of the first three chapters of the zoning regulation, so we'll get that out to you as well. Um, what else? Um, I think that's it for now. I mean, those are the big things.
They're pretty big. That train station's been a work for.
For forever.
Years now.
So they've even got, you know, just, they showed us the rendering that they have for these, the actual station itself and, uh, Winter Locks, you know, it's just a little tiny building, very nicely done. That's really all we need. We don't need the Taj Mahal, you know, we just.
And it's on the Bigelow side of the tracks.
Um, yep, so we can remain there. So that means that when we build it, we don't have to take it down when when they put the double tracking in. So it will be, um, finite. It will be permanent. Well, as permanent as this last one was.
What are they going to do with the casket building?
Um, we actually, um, had some interest in purchasing that, um, somebody wants to restore it and probably make it mixed use. So we're looking into, uh, a deal with that on, um, ties into the EverSource building, we, or the, uh, EverSource property because of parking. So we're kind, what, Nelson is kind of in charge of that, uh, Nelson Torres, so.
Are they still, are they still planning on doing the bus route back down in there and the turnaround?
No, it's going to be on the east side.
Good.
It's going to be between the tracks and Bigelow.
Right, and I think, I think that opens up a huge opportunity for Bigelow to do mixed use on that back building along the railroad tracks. You know, you're waiting for your train, you get a cup of coffee or a book or whatever and.
Or a beer.
Huh?
Or a beer if we allow breweries.
Well, it depends which way you're going. If you're going to work, you get a coffee. Coming home, grab a beer, yeah. So maybe.
That is something that we don't allow right now, so it's, but but that's something that being, you know, desired and considered.
So there's, there's an opportunity for somebody too. We could make a mixed use bar Dunkin' Donuts. In the morning till noon, it's Dunkin' Donuts, then it converts over to an Irish pub.
Oh.
I have a question for Lori. Lori, um, Mr. Poland it is, right, was doing the, uh.
Yeah, Don Poland.
Don Poland. Would it be possible in the future, near future, I don't know what COVID and all and everything else going on, that maybe as a board, um, we can go around town with them, maybe get one of the town little mini buses and drive around to the different areas.
Not, I mean, not with COVID, but.
Right.
I mean, that's too close.
Right.
Feet apart.
Yeah, I know, we, you know, we probably have to post it as a meeting too. I'm not sure, but.
Of course.
Maybe, maybe, yeah, maybe in the some, maybe, uh, in the spring or summer if things are better.
We could do a walking tour.
Is it doing those every Friday, uh, one week, uh, Friday of a month and that didn't do any good?
No, if we.
Everything's still the same. We used to go once a month, every Friday, not, everything's still the same.
What do you mean?
And the other.
They're putting boats in the pond now. How can you say things haven't changed?
Uh, it's changing a little, I guess. It'll give it a little bit. Lori, the other thing I wanted to know, do you know the company that, um, purchased the Friendly's Corporation, I guess is a restaurant group?
No.
They came out of bank, purchased them out of bankruptcy? No?
I was unaware of that.
Yeah, I don't know who it was, but. I just ask, you know, we have one, so hopefully something will happen.
I just hope that they keep selling their ice cream.
No, they're separate. The the ice cream is separate from the restaurant.
They stopped doing breakfast.
Well, I understand a restaurant group bought the company.
Is Friendly's still in existence, the restaurant?
Yep. Yeah.
There's one in Enfield. Right in front of the mall.
Yeah.
Yep.
And that's why I'm asking.
That's the one that stopped serving breakfast.
Wow, that's, I look at Friendly's as a breakfast restaurant. Okay.
I know.
All set, Lori?
I think so.
Okay, thank you. How many administrative approvals do you have for us? Five, six?
I wish I could say that, but we don't have any right now.
Okay, anything coming?
We do have a lot of pre-application meetings that have been scheduled last week, this week and for next week, so, um, starting January, I think things will pick back up.
Good, 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 good. Okay, opportunities then resolved issues. Um, combining planning and zoning and wetlands, obviously nothing's happened with that. Uh, Commissioners, anything else?
Ken?
Yes.
On the, on the board members report where the members, you know, addresses and stuff were listed, is that your correct address?
No, I changed it. I had them change it. I sent it. You got the email, Jen?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
And then Jen, if you could, since Commissioner Higley brought it up, you can blame her. Can you change my email from AOL to Gmail? Same email, just Gmail.
Okay.
Because every time we have these meetings, my laptop has my Gmail on it. I have to forward the email to myself, but now I got to go find it and then other Commissioners email me or text me to send it to them while I'm trying to find it and he's laughing. He knows who he is. Um, okay, I'll entertain. First, I want to say everybody have a great Christmas and stay.
You too.
And, um, thank you, everybody. I think we got a great commission and moving the town forward together. Lori and Jen.
Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas. See you next year.
Merry Christmas, happy new year.
See you. Lori and Jen, thank you very much for your hard work and please thank the rest of the staff, the building department and everybody and, you know, we're trying to work together and get to the same place, so.
Absolutely.
Merry Christmas, everyone. A motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Seeing none, motion is adjourned.
All right, I oppose.
Good night.
All right, well then.
Happy holidays. Happy holidays.